6:04 PM, I'd like to call the Common Council Meeting of March 15th to order. We have all council persons present in the chamber. Good to see council and staff all here. Our next item is Pledge of Allegiance and Silent Prayer in lieu of invocation. Please stand. Item four is reading of the minutes of the previous meeting held on February 15th. Item one attached. What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Thank you, that motion by Mr. Veneman, seconded by Mr. Zachar. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero Nays. Item five is recognition of Wisconsin Rapids Community Media Department Media Multimedia Coordinator, Joe Bachman, recipient of the Heart of Wisconsin Chamber of Commerce Chamber Champion Award. Joe, if you could step out for a moment, please. He's hiding. Thank you, Joe. Hey, just want to congratulate you and let everybody else know of your accomplishment. And I was happy to be at the ceremony to see the award presentation. It's a great thing for the city, and congratulations. Any words of wisdom? You gave pretty good ones that night.
Keeping it brief, um, I love everyone here. The city's great. I'll just keep it simple like that. You make my job very easy. So, leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Joe, congratulations. He's a great media guy, but he's not like being in front of the camera. All right, we are on to item number six, which is presentation from the Nicotine Prevention Alliance of Central Wisconsin about local nicotine data and trends and prevention. If you'd like to introduce yourself, then welcome.
Excuse me, sorry, let's try that again. Hi, everyone, thanks for having us tonight. My name is Laura Fisher. I'm here with Jenna Flynn, and we are support staff to the Nicotine Prevention Alliance of Central Wisconsin. Our alliance covers Marathon, Portage, and Wood Counties. So we are funded by the Tobacco Prevention and Control Program at the Wisconsin Department of Health Services. Our alliance is not the only one like ours in the state. As you can see on the map, they cover the state of Wisconsin. So each year, about 8,000 people suffer smoking-related deaths in Wisconsin. Tobacco continues to be the number-one preventable cause of death in our state. And direct exposure to smoke and secondhand exposure to smoke help rack up costs related to healthcare and loss of productivity. Annually, in Wisconsin, about $4.7 billion are lost due to smoking.
So this kind of gives you guys a timeline of where we're at with tobacco trends, prevention, policy. So back in 2010, I'm guessing most of you remember the Clean Indoor Air Act that passed. That's when smoking was disallowed in all indoor spaces. So that was a number of years ago. Sometimes it feels like it was just yesterday. But in 2014, that is when local communities started updating their ordinances to include e-cigarettes in those Clean Indoor Air ordinances. So a lot of local municipalities adopted the state statute, and in 2014 is when local communities began to amend those policies to include e-cigarettes. So as it stands at the state level, that is not included in the state Clean Indoor Air law. And then 2018, you may have recalled, before COVID, there was an e-cigarette epidemic. It was a huge issue among our youth, and it continues to be an issue. And we're excited to get back into that prevention work. So that's kind of where we're at with tobacco prevention in Wisconsin, state and locally. So this is some of the Youth Risk Behavior Survey data for Wood County. There's new data coming this spring, but the big takeaway that you'll want to look at here is that e-cigarette use has been an issue for high schoolers and a very large issue, not just high schoolers, but middle schoolers. Have you guys heard of e-cigarettes and vaping? Can you raise your hand if yes? Okay, so you kind of have an idea. Do you know someone that vapes or have had an issue with vaping? Yeah, so for our youth, it continues to be an issue, and the data tells us for youth in your community also are struggling with this.
Okay, so on this slide here, you may recognize some of the models. So vapes and e-cigarettes, any electronic product come in a variety of models, shapes, and sizes, and we continue to see new products pop up regularly, mostly among our youth. So one factor that goes into it is the issue of flavors. This seems to be a driving factor for our youth. We know that from student surveys, 89% of Wisconsin high school students wouldn't use these products if they weren't flavored. So along with this, youth who use non-cigarette tobacco products, so any electronic smoking device, they're more likely to start smoking commercial combustible cigarettes. And while vapes and e-cigarettes are still new products, and we don't know the long-term effects health-wise that they pose, we do know that cigarettes are very harmful long-term. We see that cost-effective, the death rates pose a huge cost, and again, they're all So firsthand exposure and secondhand exposure can lead to severe health consequences. We know that nicotine is highly addictive, and this is the chemical that we see most prevalent in these electronic devices. Due to low regulation or no regulation, we see high levels of nicotine, and these levels are not safe for youth to use in any way. We know that it can harm brain development, specifically in the learning and memory centers of their brain. And nicotine is only one of a laundry list of chemicals in these products. So on the screen now is a list of some of the chemicals known to be found in vapor products. Some of these are known carcinogens, and they can cause irreparable lung disease and damage. Heavy metals like lead you can see on this list, and then other volatile organic compounds are in these devices as well. So direct use, we know to be harmful, and secondhand use or secondhand exposure is also just as harmful. We know that that list of chemicals is carried out in the aerosol and the vapors in that secondhand smoke. We know that these chemicals are harmful, to the extent that the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, which is the body that sets standards for indoor quality air, they had included e-cigarette prohibition in smoke-free laws. So with all that context, it was mostly state-level things, and we wanted to do more insight into your community as well. So we put together a community survey. It was voluntary, it was electronic, and we had about 42 responses from your community members. We worked with the Wood County Health Department to help disseminate this survey. So all of respondents are individuals that either live in Wisconsin Rapids, work here, or spend their leisure or fun time here. So I have three different data points that I want to focus on, one being that 92% of respondents believe that electronic vapor products are as harmful as cigarettes. The next is that 87% of respondents believe that nicotine specifically causes health risks related to smoking. And these perceptions align with the reality that nicotine and other chemicals in these devices are harmful and cause harm. And then the final piece that I wanted to point out was that 92% of respondents disapprove of electronic vapor product use in indoor public spaces.
So with that being said, there are other communities across the state that have looked at this, amending their Clean Indoor Air Ordinance to include electronic vaping products. So on this map here, it's hard for me to look back and see, but you guys can see. So the Partnership for Tobacco-Free Wisconsin is a statewide coalition that keeps track of local ordinances. So this is a map of all the local ordinances across the state that have amended or included e-cigarettes. So the blue and orange are what I want to direct you to. The blue dots are actually city policies, the orange are county property. So I guess in summary, it's important for you to know that this isn't a new thing, though it may be a new discussion for your community. There's other local communities, even in Wood County, the City of Marshfield amended theirs quite a while ago, the City of Wausau did as well. But it's happening a lot, like even over the last couple of years. So as I mentioned earlier, this is a topic that started back in 2014, and local communities are slowly but surely looking at this and seeing what their community members think about the issue. So if this is something that the, excuse me, Wisconsin Rapids wants to look at or discuss further, this is where the Nicotine Prevention Alliance can help with that. We look at language that comes from the Public Health Law Center that has best-practice language about e-cigarettes and such. So that is what we have for you. You could move to the last slide if you'd like. So with that being said, does anyone have questions or comments?
This may sound really dumb, but I'm very, I don't know much about this. Okay, so the, are you saying that the secondhand smoke from an e-cigarette is as bad as a regular cigarette?
Not necessarily. So the folks that took the survey perceive nicotine to be harmful and perceive the chemicals to be harmful in the products. It's not to say that the secondhand smoke is the same or worse. We do not have that information, but what we do know is that the products and the chemicals are harmful, and we do have the data that tells us that this use is an issue for youth.
I also saw an article about THC being in e-cigarettes. Is that a thing in Wisconsin, Wisconsin Rapids? Are there laws against that?
That would probably require some more homework on my behalf. In terms of THC, that's a larger conversation, I would say. But yeah, my understanding is that cannabis is not allowed in Wisconsin yet, but the devices are definitely an avenue that have been used from speaking with our school resource officers to use THC.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Jake.
So what does an ordinance look like? Is it specifically no use of an e-cigarette indoors, or is it targeted at prohibiting some flavors sold within the city? What have you seen in other municipalities?
Sure, so Susan, I may look to have you help us out too with your local ordinance, but our understanding when we did our homework here for Wisconsin Rapids is that your local ordinance aligns with the state statute for Clean Indoor Air. So that means that when the state adopted that policy, Wisconsin Rapids just adopted that language, but that does not include e-cigarettes, and the state has not updated their policy to include e-cigarettes. So if that's something that the city would want to look at, it would be specific to use in indoor spaces. When we talk about flavors, that is not something that can be addressed at the local level due to preemption at the state level. So for Wisconsin, that can't happen locally. That would have to be a change at the state level to address flavors of products.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. We're happy to support this work. If you guys need anything or have any follow-up questions, this is what we do in prevention. So thank you very much for having us tonight.
Thanks for coming. All right, moving on to item number seven is Consider Resolution Ratifying and Affirming the Alexander Field Southwood County Airport Commission Petition for State Airport Development Aid Provided April 3, 2022. So this resolution was adopted by the Airport Commission, however, since the commission is made up of four municipalities, each municipality needs to adopt the petition or the resolution. And what the resolution is, is the state takes the 81 airports in the, or yeah, the 81 airports in the state, combine this together, so when they approach the federal government looking for a funding allocation, this is the evidence that they use to argue that if we need $100 million, these projects are put in. It doesn't, this is kind of the airport wish list for the past, for the next five years. It may amount to nothing. If we get an allocation, we don't have to take it, but it's just the process that they go forth to try to secure funding in the future for projects. And they did list, or there, whoops, there are projects listed in the resolution of projects that are a priority for the airport in the future, and that's why they were listed in that. What are your wishes?
Tom?
Yeah, thanks, Your Honor. Just a question, as I was reading it over, and then I was reading the, went back to the February 3 meeting when this, I guess, took place, I think, if my memory is right That Jeremy noted that the only change to the petition was the addition of the master plan, and this is a lengthy, costly document which would be, which will be necessary for future FAA grant money. Typically, a master plan for comparable airports costs $250,000 to $400,000 and take two to three years to complete. And I guess the question, how does that affect this?
Yeah, so the airport master plan will help in the capital improvements process by completing this plan. And so it's on this list of potential things that the airport would like to see hopefully funded through a grant to do. But obviously, it's going to come down to the ability to have funding for that. You know, we couldn't do it ourselves, but it is a plan that we find that would be very useful for planning of future projects and the priority of those projects. The adoption, correct.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the resolution ratification for the airport.
A motion by Bemke, seconded by Veneman. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero Nays. Item number eight, to consider a resolution for No Mow May. So the mayor's office has, last year, we received a number of inquiries as surrounding communities participate, excuse me, in No Mow May, which is a tongue-twister. And so we kind of talked about it in my office, and we thought, well, instead of just going ahead and maybe having No Mow May, that would be come to council and get your thoughts on it. You know, it could be, some people may not be in favor of it, just because you're not mowing your lawn for the month of May. And some communities do the whole yard, some communities just do the backyard. But we wanted to bring a resolution forth to see if it was something you wanted to support. I see Patrick's eagerly waiting not to mow May, and so, so I'd entertain any questions you might have. You know, we hope to tie this with some education also about prairie grasses that you could plant in your yard instead. We're also talking, you know, about education, maybe through the library, on the pollination. You know, we've been working with community development department, you know, because of the ordinances and their thoughts and any concerns they might have. Go ahead, Sherri.
Thank you. I just want to make sure that the public is aware that it's not that they're going to get penalized if they do mow in May. It's just basically that you won't get a violation if you don't do it.
That's a very good point. And the thought is, what a lot of communities do is they'll have like a yard sign that's saying you're participating in No Mow May. We're going to have an online signup, so our code enforcement department, you know, knows that they're participating in that month. Mr. Veneman.
So you just kind of answered it, that online signup part. So the enforcement would start June 1st immediately, or give some flexibility then?
There would be a little, there's a little grace time. What did we come up with, Kyle? Was it that first, that week?
So, you know, we can be lenient as directed. Typically, right now, if there is no, if No Mow May is not adopted, we provide notice of any yards in excess of seven inches, and they have one week to comply. So if, for example, there were still yards as of June 1st through the 7th, depending on when they received notice, they would have, you know, seven days before the city's called to cut the grass for them.
Thank you. Mr. Delaney. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just wondering if there's any city property that might be out of sight that normally gets mowed that would also participate in this?
Yes, we reached out to Paul Ballard and, well, the park rec and the street department, and they did have a few suggestions of some properties that the city could participate in. And there are also properties that aren't, they don't have like a thick green lawn like our lawns might be, so the growth in a month, you wouldn't, it'd be hard to tell.
Not to be a downer on the No Mow May, but does this just sound like a code enforcement headache? You know, then you get into No Mow June because you're participating into No Mow May. I mean, I get it, the bees and the flowers and all that, but I think there's just as many people who are probably passionate about keeping their yard kept and perhaps bothered by their neighbor not doing the same. So I'm going to sit this one out.
Sounds good. What are your wishes? Go ahead, Kyle.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment to that effect, that certainly there, from a code enforcement standpoint, there'll be an extra step when we're, for example, the way the resolution's currently written, an individual needs to register their property, potentially with code enforcement or through the mayor's office. Kind of, we've talked about putting signs in the yard so that as the code enforcement officer's out and about, he can easily see it, but still checking on the backend to make sure that they're registered, and that's key, because I don't want there to be this perception that it's No Mow May, nobody has to mow their yards in the entire city out of all 7,000 parcels. You have to register with the city the way this is written, and then ultimately, you have to comply after, after May. And I think therein lies another concern, that there may be some that want to stretch it, or there may be more difficulties from an enforcement standpoint. I do also recognize that, you know, grass grows one to two inches typically a week. So, you know, if it's at five inches before May, you know, it's probably not going to get 15 to 20 inches tall. I do also want to recognize too that, you know, a lot of the weeds in yards typically blossom below seven inches. So, you know, most, I think, most of the time, if there's like dandelions in yards, they're going to blossom below seven inches, and then they're going to seed above seven inches, and I think that can be concerning to neighboring residents who do regularly maintain and manicure their lawn, having the fear and the complaint that perhaps with weeds growing in excess of seven inches during the month of May, that it'll blow over to their yards, and now they're going to also have issues with weeds in their yard. So just recognize that that, from an enforcement standpoint, also could be an issue we run You know, other than that, you know, I also somewhat feel like it doesn't hurt to try. It doesn't hurt to see what the interest is with regards to the program and what enforcement issues we run into, but I certainly want to recognize that there probably are going to be some enforcement issues that will arise, but we can certainly step up to the plate and tackle those and, yeah, adjust our procedures for that month if necessary.
Thank you, Kyle. Go ahead, Mr. Bemke.
So just so I understand this, if I don't sign up for this, it's business as usual?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to support the resolution.
A motion by Bemke. And a second by Delaney. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried six A's, one Nay, one abstention. Item number nine is Consider Adoption, the Action of the Plan Commission Meeting Held March 7. By the way, Todd, unfortunately, your golf course is in Grand Rapids, and so you cannot participate in No Mow May.
Makes them long rough.
Okay, the Plan Commission met at 4:00 PM on March 7th at the City Hall. All members of, members of intendants are on file in the clerk's office. Meeting was called to order at 4:02. The previous meeting minutes from February 7th were approved 5-0. Item number two was an update about Vanda Wall and Associates. Item three is Plan 22-0078, Central State Landscaping. It was a public hearing for a conditional use permit to renovate a building at 2934 State Highway 73 North. There was a public hearing that was opened at 4:07, and no one spoke in favor or against amending, or no one spoke in favor or against the conditional use permit. It was moved and seconded to approve with conditions. That motion carried 5-0. Item four was Plan 22-0079, Central State Landscaping. Also, a public hearing and action on a request for a conditional use permit to operate a landscaping business at 2934 State Highway 73. Public hearing was opened at 4:14 PM. No one spoke in favor or against the request. There was a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit for the business with the conditions listed and on file in the Planning and Economic Development Department. That motion carried 5-0. Plan 22-0063 was Neiman Services, Inc., for a public hearing and action on a request for an amendment to Chapter 11 zoning code of the municipal, city's municipal code to define towing business and place it within the zoning district. That public hearing was opened at 4:20 PM. No one spoke in favor or against. It closed at 4:21. There was a motion and a second to approve that amendment to Chapter 11 of the zoning code. That motion carried 5-0. Item six is, there was a motion and a second to adjourn, which the meeting did adjourn at 4:27 PM. Any questions, comments? What are your thoughts? Any questions, comments? What are your wishes?
Motion to approve the report of the planning commission.
We have a motion by Austin. Seconded by Zachary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. Mr. Benham. Great, you're being considerate. That motion carried seven As, one Nay. Were you voting against the zoning ordinance or should we hold that out? Or now it's done? Okay.
So, I mean, I've been voting no to the actions of the planning commission due to the fact that the council takes these in at our meeting every month and we have no control over most of what's on there, with the exception of this ordinance.
And this one was within the council's control today.
Okay, but in, in general, I mean, there's, the majority of the stuff, I'd say that comes here and gets read in. It's just read in and we don't have any ability to take any action on it. So because of that, I've been voting no against the planning commission minutes. And in situations like this where we do have power to make decisions over this, I think these things should come, but that's not the case every month and we saw that with the assumption sign. So I'll amend my vote so that we don't have to bring this back if possible, but that's where my intentions are.
Yeah. Okay, we'll have to bring it back. All right, moving on to item 10 is consider the action adoption, well, consider the adoption, the action of the standing committees of the common council as follows. First is financing property meeting held March 1st. Mr. Rayo.
Thank you. Get used to reading these without a mask on. Finally, we'll see how it goes and hopefully we can continue that way, so. The Finance and Property Committee met at 4:30 PM on Tuesday, March 1st, 2022, in the council chambers at City Hall. All members of Finance and Property Committee were present. Also, attendants were interim fire chief Akis, Joe Likestead, Mayor Blazer, and Tim DeSorci. List of others in attendance is on file in the clerk's office. Item one was called meeting to order. Chairman, Chairperson Rayo called the meeting to order at 4:30 PM. Item two, consider request from the fire department to approve the new ambulance fee schedule. It was moved by Catnaugh, seconded by Rayo to approve the ambulance fee schedule as presented as attachment one, and that motion carried. Item three, consider request from the engineering department to review easement request on parcel 34-09841 for ATC's transmission line project. It was moved by Catnaugh, seconded by Bemke to approve the easement request on parcel number 34-09841 for ATC's transmission line project. That motion carried. Item four, consider request from Stanley Shell Incorporated, DBA, A to Z Mini Mart, agent for a Class A fermented malt beverages and Class A intoxicating liquor license for the premises located at 241 8th Street South. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Rayo to approve a Class A fermented malt beverages and Class A intoxicating liquor license for Stanley Shell, Inc., DBA, A to Z Mini Mart, for the premises located at 2411 8th Street South, and that motion carried. Item five, consider request from Stanley Shell Incorporated, DBA, A to Z Fast Mini Mart, for a Class A fermented malt beverages and Class A intoxicating liquor license for the premises located at 366 8th Street, 3660 8th Street South. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Catnaugh to approve a Class A fermented malt beverages and Class A intoxicating liquor license for Stanley Shell, DBA, A to Z Mini Mart, for the premises located at 3660 8th Street South, and that motion carried. Item six, consider for approval a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, T2651 8th Street South, for a cranberry art exhibit opening to be held on Thursday, April 14th, 2022, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Catnaugh to approve a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, 2651 8th Street South, for a cranberry art exhibit opening to be held on Thursday, April 14th, 2022, from 5:30 PM to 7:30 PM, and that motion carried. Item seven was considered for approval, a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, 2651 8th Street South, for an open mic event to be held on Friday, March 25th, 2022, from five to, from 7:00 to 10:00 PM. It was moved by Bemke, seconded by Catnaugh to approve a temporary retail Class B fermented malt beverages license for Central Wisconsin Cultural Center, 2651 8th Street South, for an open mic event to be held on Friday, March 25th, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 10:00 PM. The motion carried. Item eight, discuss issuance of 2022 general obligation promissory notes. It's moved by Bemke, seconded by Catnaugh to proceed with issuing 2022 general obligation promissory notes as approved in the 2022 budget attachment number two, and that motion carried. Item nine, audit of the bills. It was moved by Catnaugh, seconded by Rayo to approve check number 11596. The check number is 11991, and that motion carried. Item 10, to set the next meeting date, the next regularly scheduled finance and property meeting will be Tuesday, April 5th, 2022, at 4:30 PM here in the council chambers. Item nine was adjourned. It's moved by Bemke, seconded by Catnaugh to adjourn. The motion carried and meeting adjourned at 5:09 PM. With that, Your Honor, I move for adoption of the report.
Thank you, Mr. Rayo. The clerk's got, or has.
I just want to make mention of the note in the agenda for this report that item number five, the DBA has been changed from A to Z Fast Mini Mart to just A to Z Mini Mart. He made that change after finance. Yeah, just taking out the word fast, so it's just mini, A to Z Mini Mart.
Mr. Catnaugh seconded it and go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I just wanted to commend Todd and Tim for their work on the ambulance fee schedule and the recent EMS contracts. With their work, we were able to get these rates and contracts up to the fair market rate. And with that, we, it's looking like we'll bring in an additional 340,000 in revenue and we were able to add an additional EMS employee. We were also able to restructure the rates so that there is a resident rate versus non-resident, which I think really helps our constituents. So again, just wanted to give a shout out to them and their work on this project.
Thank you. Mr. Bemke.
I'd just like to hold out item number three.
Everybody good with that? Yeah. Mr. DeSorci.
Do we need to hold out item one because it's a resolution or can it just be adopted as part of the report?
For the ambulance rate schedule?
Against the whole report, so I guess I would suggest that it be held out separate so that we can determine what. I mean, this isn't going to require any extraordinary vote, right? The resolution, so I, I would suggest to help, to hold it out.
Good with that, Mr. Bemke also?
Please, I don't hold out number, item number one.
Okay, so we have one and three held out. Okay, so regarding the balance of the agenda, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on those items? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. And that motion carried eight As, zero As regarding item number one.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Yep. Let's catch up. We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Catnaugh to approve that resolution. Any discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. And that motion carried eight As, zero As regarding item number three.
But. So if I remember right, the night that we did this, I believe Joe, either you had to leave early, but there were two questions. One was on access to city property. I think they wanted unlimited access from any city property. And I believe there was also a question about herbicides possibly. So do you have an update for us on that?
Yes, I did find out from ATC that the adjacent easements on either side of the easement in question do not, they don't have authorization to use herbicide on those adjacent easements. And then also on the access across, anywhere across the other land to get to their easement, did confirm that it is, it would be their intent to access anywhere across city property to get to the easement if authorized.
So when you say if authorized, do they have to contact you to get authorization? Do they have to come to the council? And is this a standard practice?
I, I think it's a standard practice for, for utility companies such as ATC, but it's, it's in the document for signature. If the city authorizes it, it'd be initialed in the easement document.
So you're recommending that we go ahead with this?
As far as the herbicide treatment, it's entirely up to the, to the city. I guess there's, on either side of it, there's city easement that they're not authorized to use herbicide on, so. And then with the ingress and egress, I would not recommend authorizing that.
Thank you.
What are your wishes?
So, so would we take this back to committee?
We have a motion by Tom to approve.
Sorry, I didn't see that or hear that.
And is there a second? Seeing none.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
This is just to approve easement, not ingress, egress, herbicides? Because I guess there's three different areas there in one agenda item.
Do you have any thought, Joe?
So it's all part of the easement document. I guess it was, it was, you know, if the easements are approved, it could be approved with authorization for either of those other two items, the herbicide or the ingress or egress.
At the meeting, I, it just says in here that it was moved by me and seconded by Bemke to approve the easement request. And on that request, did they have, I don't have it, I have to scroll down, but did they have ingress, egress? I know they had the herbicides.
Yeah, it's all, it's all in that document.
So if a vote to approve this is a vote to give them rights to change ingress, egress and?
You could, you could approve the easement without authorizing herbicide treatment and without authorizing ingress and egress.
And that would be?
So they'd still have, be granted the easement that they need for their utilities and fill in the gap that they have. And so it's consistent through, across the entire parcel. It just, those two provisions, you could, you could deal with in the same motion.
But if Tom's motion moves forward, which is just to approve, you're, we're approving ingress, egress?
Mr. Rayo has offered to withdraw his motion and willing to start over.
Okay.
So the easement is just one document and that's what you're asked to approve. But it, within that document, there are two, two sections where we could initial if we wanted to allow those two things. And one of them is the, the herbicidal chemicals and the other is basically going beyond the boundaries, boundaries of the easement. I believe, would it be the staff recommendation to not initial either of those?
Yeah, certainly not the, not the full access in, in light of no authorization granted to ATC. Yes, same with the herbicide treatment.
Right, so the, the, so the motion would be to approve the easement without initialing or an alternative would be to approve the easement and initial one of those areas. But, but right now it isn't initialed, obviously. But that would be part of the, the motion of how you wanted to, to address those two. But I, I believe the staff recommendation would be to not initial those two and just have the easement as is without the initials.
Patrick? Joe, is it in the city's best interest to allow the easement? Is that what, what you're saying?
The, the easement for their transmission line, just the foundational easement, yes. There's these two additional provisions as part of that, that if initialed, would grant further authorization for herbicide treatment and further ingress and egress anywhere across the city property. And certainly the ingress and egress, I would definitely recommend not signing that or authorizing that.
Is this something that needs to be authorized this month or could it be sent back to committee for further discussion about?
I'm not sure. I know their project is, is beginning. It's going from, from Rapids to Plover. And I'm not sure exactly where they're at in that process. I know that this month worked in their timeline, but certainly I guess if it does go back to committee, I'll notify ATC that it'll be April, April, considered in April.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the easement without initial.
A motion and a second to approve the easement without initialing the two spots?
That, correct.
Is that correct?
Jake? I'll second.
Too late. Thank you. Mr. Zachary.
So my understanding here is that if we agree to the easement, they can get going with their project without these two other stipulations. And the first one being they can't egress and they can't do whatever they want on the rest of the land. So we're just, they're giving them the area to the transmission site, not everywhere else. Is that correct?
Yes, yep, yep. It's largely just to fill in a, a gap in the existing easements that are already out there.
And then the second one was, we just don't want them to spray or put chemicals down?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried 8A's, 0As.
Go ahead. I have a question before we get too far off of this. So, will you be contacting them, Joe? I guess I would not be opposed. We didn't, well, for one, you weren't here, and she, I think she came in after we had already acted on this. Would we be willing to discuss this again? Or at least have staff there while she's giving her presentation?
I guess, what do we need to discuss?
Well, I guess I would, I'm curious about the easement, and, and I am curious about the herbicide, because I think if, if I remember correctly, they're spraying along there anyways, correct?
No, they're, they're not. So, in the middle of the length of the city's parcel, there's existing easements on both sides of the easement that they're asking for. And for whatever reason, there's this triangular shaped gap in the, in the easements across the city property. And either side of this easement, they do not have authorization to use herbicides. So, currently, they, they do not.
Okay. I misunderstood. Thank you.
All good? Okay, thank you. We can move on to item B, the Public Works Committee meeting held March 3rd. Mr. Austin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on Thursday, March 3rd, 2022, in the first floor conference room at City Hall and via remote video conference. Myself, Matt Zacker, were in attendance. Patrick Delaney was excused. Others attending are listed below. The meeting was called to order at 5:00 PM. Item number two, review the snow removal policy. Motion by Zacker, second by Austin, to approve the policy as presented. Motion carried. Item three, review engineering and street department activities report. The report was reviewed. Item four, review proposed transportation utility ordinance and review proposed changes to current special assessment ordinances in chapters five and six. John Fonti, owner of Piscopo's, asked what his fees would be. The draft transportation utility ordinance was discussed. Other discussion included the following. Fifty-one point eleven appeals, modify language to waive the appeal fee if appeal is granted. Appeal fee is waived for a period of time for ordinance adoption for a period of six months. Add in a super majority, two-thirds vote requirement to change target revenue budget amounts. Remove fifty-one point zero seven G structures used for the storage, maintenance, and repair of transportation related operational equipment. Assess party credits, special assessment forgiveness and refunds were discussed. Twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two projects and pending special assessments were discussed. Chapter five and chapter six changes were reviewed. The official sidewalk map will be referred and considered separate from the transportation utility. Special assessments would remain in chapter five and chapter six to assess for new developments, new subdivisions, annexations, et cetera. Sidewalk repairs should be included as part of the transportation utility. The Public Works Committee will further consider the assessed party credits, special assessment forgiveness, and refunds at a March 14th, 2022 meeting. The intent is to have a draft ordinance available for consideration at council on March 15th, 2022. Item five, review 2022 asphalt contract bid results and consider bid award. Motion by Zacker, second by Austin, to accept the bids and award the project to American Asphalt Wisconsin in the amount of $486,986.11. Motion carried. Item six, review 2022 crushing contract bid results and consider bid award. Motion by Austin, second by Zacker, to accept the bids and award the project PGA Incorporated in the amount of $85,570. Motion carried. Item seven, review and consider a feasibility study to address noise and vehicle delays associated with the railroad on the west side of the city. Motion by Austin, second by Zacker, to solicit proposals for a feasibility study to address railroad issues. Motion carried. Item eight, review the referral list. Referral list to consider, referral to consider resident request to not reinstall sidewalk on Smith and Cherry Street Road Projects. And item nine was adjourned. Motion by Zacker, second by Austin, to adjourn at 6:59 PM. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the report of the Public Works Committee on March 3rd.
Thank you. We have a motion by Austin, and seconded by Delaney. Is there any further discussion on that report? Go ahead.
I just have one quick, I'm not talking. I just have a question regarding this statement, I guess regarding the snow policy, removal policy. I was contacted by a couple people on Sunday when we got that half inch of light fluffy snow, and I just said that I'd mentioned it. They're just surprised that a half inch of snow, we were out plowing and salting when it was going to be 40 degrees that day with the price of fuel and overtime. And I said I, as always, agree with the expertise of our department heads, but I was just surprised because in that new policy, it states four inches. So, I just wanted to make note of that, that I was just surprised with that. And number seven, I watched the meeting, and I know that there's money for that, but I was just wondering if the committee, the quiet zone, I know kind of has been talked about in the past. And instead of spending, I can't remem, I don't know if there was an amount listed with that, but I was just wondering if that's something that we couldn't get started with our own engineering department. I know they are very busy, but according to the United States Department of Transportation Federal Railroad Administration, how to create a quiet zone such as selecting the crossings, making sure that there's a half mile, the flashing lights, gates, I mean, as I was reading through this of how to enact this, the initial legwork, why we couldn't do that on our own. And I know when I pulled off their website, there's 70 municipalities within Wisconsin that have passed the quiet ordinance. Latest is, I know Marshfields had theirs for a while, and I was just wondering if we had, as the committee, done research and contacted out to different municipalities of what they've done, instead of just going out and spending the money on getting, getting information, is there work that we can do on our own, I guess, initial legwork? It doesn't, I mean, I don't want to say it looks difficult, but there's a lot of initial stuff that I would think our engineering department would have. So, I was just wondering if the committee had talked about any of that. Thank you.
Go ahead, Joe.
So, the, I think we touched on it. The last time that the Public Works Committee formally reviewed the quiet zones, I think was in 2016, and a couple other times prior to that even. And so, there's, there's a certain expense with some of the improvements that would need to be made, and I think that was largely the reason that it was held off from former meetings, but it could certainly be considered in the future.
I just, I think it's a really good idea. I don't want to say it can't be done, obviously, because we have 70-some municipalities in Wisconsin that have passed that. I just thought before we spend the money, that engineering could look through some of the, creating a new quiet zone, seeing if it's able to be done in, just from common sense, kind of looking at it, it looks like it could, but I was just wondering if there's that initial legwork that we could do here before we outsource, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, and I agree that, you know, if they're getting estimates, I think in the meantime, they can spend some time, because any, any estimates or any study would have to be approved anyways going forward, but I agree that, you know, reaching out and using some of the neighboring community is, as a resource, is a good idea. Mr. Reom?
Yeah, thank you. And I think I, I think it was last month that I, that I brought, I did bring this up about the quiet zone, because I think, I think that was in your report, wasn't it, Ryan, about the High Street, the different three intersections or whatever, and I brought up. And we passed that to do that, and my, the question was, had dealt with the quiet zone and that, and then you came with the, to do this study and that, which is fine. But with what we agreed to do last month, if we, if we were to, I guess, do anything further, would us doing what we agreed to do a month ago, would any of that be a waste of money? Or, you know, I mean, because that was several hundred thousand dollars, as I recollect. Or would that, or would that be somewhat, that would go towards maybe? The, the improvements would go towards that?
So, the, the improvements that are proposed for the signals along the expressway, that project, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so largely, those improvements would be outside of any other improvements related to, related to a quiet zone, certainly. And I guess if there's, if there's other larger scoped projects or options that are being considered, I guess it all depends on what that would be, is if there would be an impact to those improvements that we would make this year on those traffic signals.
Okay, Joe, so I watched the minute, or the meetings, but I didn't, I didn't see an amount. Was, was the study that you guys approved, feasibility study, was it like 12,000? Did I see that somewhere, or?
Twenty thousand was a benchmark number that was thrown out.
And that is just to see if it, the quiet zone would work, or what? I'm just confused, I guess, what, what is that money going for?
So, the quiet zone would, would largely just be an option under consideration. We would supply that information to any consultants that would be, that we'd be soliciting to do a more formal study at options to, you know, options that would include such things as quiet zone, railroad relocation, grade separation between the rail and, and the adjacent roadways. Basically, looking at all of the options, taking into consideration the concerns that the, that the city has to date, and seeing, you know, price points, pros and cons, kind of where, where the options fall out.
So, that's what the $20,000 would do?
And at, at this point, it's, the, the 20,000 would just be to kind of quantify the, the level of work involved for a consultant to propose, proposal for. We would still bring back any proposals after we send out a request for those.
Okay, and that's nothing, that's, that legwork is nothing that, like, your office could do?
As far as studying?
Right.
Components of it. Other aspects, it's a bit outside of our expertise without a lot of extra legwork.
Okay. Because I just, I'm just cautious about, I know I read in there about moving the road and building some overpasses. I mean, we know we're not going to spend that kind of money, so it'd be ridiculous to me to do a study saying that.
Go ahead, Mr. Austin.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, this is not just a quiet zone study. This is for overpass or railroad relocation, and I don't know if, if, if I would resort to saying we're not going to spend the money. I think this is a very important issue to the city, many residents within this city, and I think we owe it to them to do this study, to, to lay it all out there for them and to understand what the cost or the impact truly would be to the city to, to try to either reroute or, or get better ask, access around this line, so. This $20,000 number came from a proposal, I think, back in 2018. It was supposed to be part of the budget, and it never came to fruition, and it was a good sticking point for a number for, for the study to be done. That's why we chose that number. So, that's all. Thank you.
And I was just wondering, I know in 2000, Joe, you mentioned 2018, but I know in 2015, when Auburndale was having the big issue with the, the railroad, excuse me, blocking their driveway, I know the local paper had done a bunch of research. I know Wood County was involved in that, and I was just wondering if the committee had reached out, instead of reinventing the wheel, kind of looking back, I know it was a few years ago, but kind of looking back and gathering that information instead of reinventing the wheel? That's, thank you.
Mr. Katnaugh?
Thank you. I, I have to agree with Sheri on the, if we're not going to be prepared to take on the construction costs, I don't know if a $20,000 study is necessary, unless it would give us some clarity on whether we can enact the quiet zone. Is this something that we, we can set by ordinance, or is it done by the federal government or state government?
For a quiet zone?
Yeah.
The quiet zone is a Federal Railroad Administration approval, and with dated numbers, what I recall is upwards of a million dollars in infrastructure and, and grade crossing improvements. And so, you know, it is something that we could apply for. We could put those funds and increase the safety at those crossings to allow for a quiet zone. There are some stipulations that, that the quiet zone length has to be at least a half mile in, in length along the rail, and some of the costs are, are set by CN for their, their rail grade crossing upgrades that would be needed. And, you know, so we could update those numbers and, and bring them back to the committee for consideration.
So, does, would the $20,000 study help us with getting the federal government to enact a quiet zone there, since we don't have power over that, or would that not contribute to that?
It's possible that there could be some legwork done as part of the study for that. It probably wouldn't include the application process for the, in the design of any of the safety enhancements at those grade crossings. There would still need to be work that would have to be done with that outside of an application and certainly this, this study.
Thank you.
Mr. Benjamin?
In terms of whether we spend the money and whether we're not going to be spending the money in the future, it seems to me that this is more about the movement of the track or potential long-term down the line of an overpass or something of that nature, and I don't know that we're not ready, prepared. Obviously, we don't have the money to spend that now, something we're not really doing now, but by the same token, and we've talked about things for a long time, and I think eventually, when an ambulance gets stuck, somebody passes, because they couldn't get through that track, then all of a sudden, that money's going to become available to start thinking about that. So, I'm certainly not opposed to looking into moving the track or doing oversights. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, this is one item that actually might make sense at some point, if we have some number to go to a referendum, you know, and see what the community wants to do, because it is impactful to all of us at some point, and it has been. Any further questions, comments? Seeing none?
Was that held out?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, yeah, so we have the full report. We have a motion in a second to adopt the report.
Of just March 3rd, correct?
Correct. Yep, the first one. Seeing none, no further discussion, please cast your ballots.
I didn't get to it quick enough, but so, are we in the full report, is it voting to approve paying for that study?
Correct.
And it's too late to hold that out, I'm guessing?
We haven't announced the vote yet. Yeah, if you guys want to allow that item to be held out yet.
Are we approving the money, or are we just approving to get the estimates?
The estimates in the report.
Then we're bringing the estimates back again, is what I understand. So, we're not approving $20,000 right now.
Correct.
Okay, I'm fine then.
Okay. That motion carried 8A's, 0As, and onto the second. And we're onto the second Public Works report from March 14th. Ms. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on Monday, March 14th, 2022, in the council chambers at City Hall and via remote video conference. Myself, Matt Zachar and Patrick Delaney were in attendance, others attending are listed below. The meeting was called to order at 5:05 PM. Item two, review requests by residents along Smith Street and Cherry Street to not reinstall sidewalk along these 2022 road projects. Dave Judnick at 1780 Smith Street and Jaron Goodwin of 1761 Smith Street spoke on why sidewalk was not needed. Motion by Delaney, second by Zachar to approve not reinstalling sidewalk at Smith Street and Cherry Street as part of the 2022 road projects. Motion carried. Item three, review proposed transportation utility ordinance and review proposed changes to current special assessment ordinances in chapters five and six. Ordinance changes that were discussed at the prior Public Works meeting were presented in the draft ordinance. The assessed party fee credit, option one, was discussed along with an additional option two to write off special assessment balances and associated refunds for assessments invoiced in 2020 and 2021. Tim DeSorci, Finance Director, stated that under this option, the balance being written off would be $651,281 and the refund amount would be $357,096. It could be paid through the general fund reserves. Attorney Schill noted the assessed party fee credit was less of a potential legal concern, whereas refunds and write-off of, of balances were more sus- suspect. A motion was made by Austin, second by Zachar, to approve the draft ordinance language as presented along with associated special assessment language in chapter five and chapter six. Discussion followed regarding the two-third vote and automatic adjustment to the transportation utility charge. There was unanimous consent to amend the motion as follows. To approve the draft ordinance language as presented, except for adding language to allow an automatic adjustment to the utility charge consistent with the CPI without requiring a two-thirds vote, along with associated special assessment language in chapter five and six. Motion carried. Item four, review bid results for the 2022 concrete contract for reconstruction projects and local road improvement projects and consider bid award, motion by Austin, second by Delaney, to accept the bids and award the 2022 concrete contract to S.D. Ellen Becker in the amount of $557,264.45. Motion carried. Item five, review a referral list. We removed item eight, Smith Street and Cherry Street sidewalk, and item six was adjournment. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve the report of the Public Works Committee for March 14th.
So we have a motion to approve, seconded by Bemke.
I would like to hold out the Cherry and Smith Street sidewalk item.
Number two.
And number three?
And number three, everybody good? So we have the balance of the report, which is the concrete or the, the bids, the concrete. Any further discussion on that item? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. That motion carried eight A's, zero Nays. Mr. Catton, on number two.
Sure, so based on the report or document here from Joe Ickes, the, the request was from Smith and Cherry Street residents to not reinstall sidewalk along these 2022 road projects. Currently, they already have nearly 100% of sidewalk installed. So this is a street that's going from having 100% sidewalk to, we're not going to put sidewalk in it, is that correct? And what was the reasoning besides they don't want sidewalk anymore? Anything specific?
The only, the only other items, I guess, that would, would lend itself to not putting sidewalk back in in, in this particular area would be that it's, it's somewhat like a subdivision offset its own little corner of the city. It's only, it doesn't see any through traffic through the neighborhood. So very little traffic, no through traffic. And that's, I believe that's the only, the, the two, two, I guess, points to point out for I guess reasons why you wouldn't put sidewalk back in.
And it's the residents saying there's very little traffic or through traffic? Or we did a study on that?
Residents saying that and then also just, just local experience of the area.
Sure. Because I don't like the precedent that this sets that current neighborhoods where there's sidewalk can all get together, write a letter and then have the sidewalk removed during construction. I think if you live in the city, for the most part, the expectation is that you will have sidewalk in your neighborhood. And if you live down the road from that neighborhood, there would be sidewalk there. Again, it's, it's a precedent that I don't want to set, so I'm going to be voting against this.
Good.
I agree with Jake, I know I watched the meeting last night and granted, Joe reminded me, I think it's only, they said, three blocks long. It's a very short street, they said approximately.
Yeah, Smith Street is a long block, but Cherry Street is, is short.
Okay, okay. And the only concern, like Jake, I just keep coming back to it, meeting after meeting. It just seems like sometimes we set our, even though there's policy, at some times, some committee members are, you know, like the chestnut and 12th Street stop sign. It was our experts' opinion, Engineering Department, that there is no need for one. But as a committee and a council, we put one there anyways. So we're not going with our own policies. So I like the idea, I know, Joe, you had mentioned last night about a map, something to go back to, I know, like you said, not necessarily a loophole about coming, you know, the council. But it's like we're wishy-washy all the time. It's like if it benefits someone in our neighborhood or, or whatever, then, okay, we're not going to go with what you as the expert, that's why we hire you, recommend. And then other times, we do and we don't. So it's like, I would just like something more consistent. If we have policy, why aren't we following our own policy? I know what our HR committee, I had asked about modification that's something different about a position. And they said, well, we don't follow, we haven't followed that policy since I've been here. So it's just, why aren't we following our own policy? We hire our experts and our department heads, why aren't we listening to them? And so, like you said, you know, you, you guys are spending more time on setting up projects because you do it without sidewalks or with sidewalks, so you're, you're duplicating work because you don't know what the council is going to want, where I don't think we, you're the expert, why it's coming here in the first place. But that's just my two cents, thank you.
Good, Ms. Ross.
On the topic of the standardized city sidewalk map, our discussion went to that in this particular topic. And I believe Mr. Ickes did, correct me if I'm wrong, but he would not recommend sidewalk being reinstalled in this location. So that was part of our decision-making as well, thank you.
But again, like I said, and, and that's fine, I agree with this as well. But like I said, tonight, we go with the recommendation of engineering, but at other times when things are happening, we don't. So I would just like something more uniform, I guess, if we have a policy in place, why it's coming back here? Because it should be followed under policy as well, thank you.
Ms. Ickes said, didn't the ordinance allow, didn't you read something that had "and" city council?
Let's see here. Sidewalk shall be installed when the street is reconstructed, rehabilitated or, or overlaid if any of the following conditions are met and if it is approved by the common council. So we, we set up the designs to follow the ordinance as it's, as it's written. And, you know, there, there is a, I guess, a clause there that, that allows the, the common council discretion to consider modifications based upon unique circumstances and, and projects. And I guess ultimately, it, it really boils down to what, what the city wants for a standard. What's, what's the city's plan for for sidewalk i- in the city? I mean, that, that's ultimately what, what any official plan would, would entail or, or even what these, the ordinance provisions would be driving at.
Thank you. Matt?
I mean, thank you. I agree with you, Sheri, like, we've been doing this for about a year now and it, what I'm understanding is there's, it's not all black and white. And, and we're asked when the, when it gets gray, kind of, to assess what our professionals say, what the community says, since we're the go-between between the residents that are living here and the, and the people that are working in the city and trying to hear all different sides that have information that we need and then making a, a sound decision based on that information. This wasn't an easy one, I don't necessarily, I could go either way on it, to be honest, because, you know, it's collector's streets and sidewalks should go there. But in this situation, what we're understanding is they don't really serve a purpose because not very, nobody's using them. But at the same time, if we want our city to be uniform, then we put them in. So I understand what you're saying, but I, I feel like our job, what we're being elected to do is fill in those gray areas when there's not an easy answer. Thank you.
Good.
One last comment. So is that something that the ordinance could be changed, Joe, like you were saying, because it says "or" common council? So you would use your discretion as the city engineer, unless there was other issues that you could bring forth voluntarily to the council instead of "and" the council? Is that just a, just something to think about, I guess? Thank you.
What are your wishes?
Motion to approve item two.
A motion by Ryan, seconded by Dean. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Please cast your ballots. That motion carried six A's, two Nays. Item three, Ms. Evans.
Thank you. You got something too?
No.
Oh, you're good. I watched the meeting, I know this is, we're going to talk about it, but I just, had just a couple of things. So I know the beginning of us talking about the transportation utility, we were all worried that we didn't want the cost to go up every year. I know our stormwater utility goes up every year and up and up and up, we didn't want it to creep up. So I was surprised when you guys said you automatically put a cost of living in last night, I believe. A resolution to increase the transportation utility budget above that requires a two-third vote. So does that mean that the budget for any succeeding year shall be increased by the Consumer Price Index for all, for the 12 months ending? So that means it's automatically going to go up, cost of living, every single year, no matter what? Is that correct? One question?
Right, that was my understanding. But if, but I don't think that prohibits, I mean, that's kind of the default, but I don't think that would prohibit a council from maintaining it at the same level or reducing it by a simple majority vote, but to increase it above that would require two-thirds. And if I'm mistaken on that, then maybe we should clarify that. But is that what, what you're all thinking? That's kind of how I, how I wrote it.
That was my understanding, obviously, it's approved in the budget every year by council.
Right.
Jim?
There's still a resolution that's, that's done, right? If it was going to go over that whatever the cost of living was, then that would be, trigger the supermajority. Otherwise, it's a simple majority.
Okay.
Jim?
And then?
Tim's got a little bit more, I think.
No, I was just going to make a comment that, yeah, I mean, it, it'll, it'll still, the transportation utility will be part of the annual budget process. So regardless of what the amount is, that's still going to go through the budget process and be approved as part of the annual budget, whether, you know, according to what is recommended, it requires a majority or two-thirds. But it'll, it'll be approved on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you. And then I just had one question, I know it was brought up later last year when we were talking about it, but I haven't, unless I'm missing something. So I know we're talking about the credits and the refunds and leaning towards the credits. But what happens for people who move? So I was assessed in 2020, 20, and I'm paying on 2020 work because I would have been assessed that last year, right, through the hearing? And it would have been on my taxes. So if I paid it in full and now I moved, so I paid the whole $20,000 upfront, paid it and now I moved. So I can't get a credit because I don't live there anymore, so I paid the $20,000 for living there for one year. The new property owners moved in. How do they know that it's not me and it's someone else and they're getting a credit for it?
They're not going to get the credit.
So the people that paid the $20,000 upfront, they're just stuck?
Right, and you could move to Florida, we're not going to, we're not going to extend the credit to you, so, right.
But I'm just saying.
And the credit, right, the credit is only while you, if you're still remaining in that home and receive that, have that utility account, basically.
Okay.
And once you leave or sell or transfer, then that's going to terminate.
Okay, because I know like now, when, I know Tim and I had kind of talked about that at that time, like if, if you had it and it was, and I was moving, the realtor kind of knows that you have this assessment coming so they would know that you're not, I mean, they're just stuck, they're just not, they're not getting anything. Okay, my next question is, so obviously, the city is not exempt from the utility. So the money that we would be paying for our city-owned properties to, for the utility, I haven't heard this mentioned. Where do we get that money from? Is that, I mean, is it going, is it going to be billed back to the taxpayers or taxpayers going to be paying our share or? And I don't know if, Joe, you have those amounts for city-owned property, but where is that money coming from? In, I don't.
I'm guessing that it would work similar to what we do with the stormwater utility where, you know, city properties assessed, you know, stormwater utility, but we net that out in the revenue. So for whatever's in the stormwater utility fund, it's net of what the city's expenses would be paid. So the, the amount that we budget is supported by that fee is net of what the city pays into that. So there's no other budgetary effect on it. So it's netted out in the utility.
So, help me understand this. So if we're collecting the $500,000, it would be more than that in an essence, or we, we would have less going into the utility if we're taking out $10,000 of what the city's?
Right, I mean, you can look at it two ways. I mean, you can budget the net, say, $490,000 in that, or you could budget the $500,000 there and then just budget for, in the appropriate operating accounts, the, the amount of the, of the transportation utility fee.
But in essence, the tax.
But ultimately, net an overall budget, you know, you budget here or you net it out over here, it's the same.
But in essence, that's as taxpayers are paying that portion because it's a budgetary, any, right? Okay. And then I know you're talking about the credits last night, so, you know, I know it's hard for everyone to grasp, myself included. So that amount, when you were saying, when people are asking where that money is coming from, it's really not coming anywhere because they haven't paid that per se, but if the work was done in 2020, they would have started paying some last year. And so that work was done, so that work has already, I mean, we, we paid for the concrete, we paid for that, and now they're paying us back, per se. So if they're getting credited in the transportation utility, let's say, just starts January 2023, let's say, so that accounts building, building, building. let's say, just starts January 2023, let's say, so that accounts building, 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 where's that credit money coming from? I guess I'm not grasping that.
The credit would be offset against what the transportation utility revenue would be. So, obviously, you know, we're setting a revenue target of $500,000, let's say. You know, and then we develop the fee, and then the credit. So, that would be netted out against whatever the revenue is going into the transportation utility.
So, in essence, and, so if we, let's say it's enacted, we start January 2023, and it needs to build a year to get that money in there to pay for that work, right? Is that...
Well, what the transportation utility's funding is offsetting what we would normally budget in the general fund for special assessment revenue of approximately $350,000. And then, an additional $150,000 is included in that revenue target that's gonna pay for the mill and overlay. So, depending on when we, the fee gets enacted and that revenue comes in, you know, it'll be part of the budget. And then, obviously, it's one of those things where you can kinda budget the revenue, just like we do, you know, with, we budget expenditures, and then we budget our revenues for 2022. You know, the timing isn't exact, but in the calendar year, the calendar budget, we're gonna have this revenue coming in to offset the expenditures. And they don't necessarily always occur, you know, simultaneously. So, with the transportation utility, if we got it enacted, when we go to the budget for next year, we're gonna estimate, let's say, approximately $500,000, of which $350,000 will go to offset the special assessment revenue, and then we'll also budget $150,000 for mill and overlay. So, during that year, we'll spend $150,000 for mill and overlay, and we'll collect it at the same time.
Right. And what I guess, what I was questioning is the credits that we'll be paying, or the credits, because they, they're not paying in, so we're, because they, we're getting rid of that, so we're crediting that. So, those parcels aren't paying in. So, instead of having the 9,000 parcels that we think are paying this, so we're gonna get the $500,000, is not going to be realistic, because they might not be paying for 10 years, or seven years, or six years. So, it's like, to me, it's like, how does that utility ever get to where it needs to be? Because we're crediting it, so we're really not having 9,700 parcels paying. So, it's like, okay, that's always gonna, it's always gonna be short. So, what am I missing?
Well, I mean, but don't forget that, as they're getting that credit, they're still paying their installments on their special assessments. So, that revenue will be there to make up for whatever the credit is. You know, and we discussed, you know, what, you know, with that special assessments, as they run out their term, you know, we had talked about, well, you know, maybe we'd put those monies back into the mill and overlay program. So, they'll be receiving credit, but they're also gonna be still paying their existing special assessments until they terminate.
Yep, you're welcome. Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'm tailing off of what Tim was just talking about, how they're still paying off the installments. One of the things that I've always questioned is the city taking interest on the special assessments. And so, one of the things I think we could try to write into that would be to remove the interest on those installment payments moving forward. I don't see any reason for the city to be taking interest on something we were possibly going to write off. So, that's my thoughts.
Tom?
Thank you. With seven or whatever, 9,000 parcels and whatever, including businesses and whatnot, and listening to, one of the businesses, I think, was $55,000 or something, and another was 75-something, and residential's like 20. With all that added up, what does that come to in a year's time? Hmm? Does it? No, I, it's, that's what we're looking at, is that, does that come up to that?
Sorry about that. What was the question?
With all the, we're looking at the $500,000 phrase. So, does that, so does what each property, residential, business, everything, what they're assigned that they're due is, does that come up to that $500,000? Is it more than that? Is it...
So, there's...
I mean, if you take 20 times X number, and 55 at this, and 75 at that, or 150 at that, does that come up to the $500,000, or...
Yes, it's going to come up to the $500,000. There's still some accounts that are being worked on, trying to tie the transportation utility account to electric utility accounts. And in that process, we're still finding a few, I guess, anomalies that we're correcting here as we're continuing to move forward with this. But the $500,000 is the benchmark, the target. And then, we have, we're assuming a 10% for the base fee. So, that's at $50,000 initially here, and we'll adjust that, you know, as we know what that base fee is actually going to comprise from an actualized dollar standpoint. But all of the fees then to residential properties and different land uses, they'll be adjusted based upon the final number of accounts and final trip fee. So, we've been operating off of around annual trip fee of $1.50, and a base fee of $6. And so, when we get all the accounts finalized, there's gonna be, you know, pennies different as far as what the trip fee actually will be and what the base fee will actually be, which will have a slight impact to a monthly invoice.
So, the intent is, it's gonna come up to that $500,000, or almost exactly?
Yep.
Okay. I know that's what we were looking at doing, but it, okay. The other, if I may, question I had, and I did bring it up last night, and I, and I guess part of it, even Sherri brought it up, was even with the CPI, being automatic in there. So, you know that there will be an increase every year. I may have missed, but I don't remember any discussion about subtracting that, if they didn't want to accept it. That was put in there to, a way to not have the, which I'm gonna get at in the next one, is not having the vote on it. That was gonna be automatic, my understanding was, anyway. And we may not disagree with that, because maybe that'll be something to, some way to, because obviously, expenses are gonna go up. So, is this gonna stay at $500,000? We all may wanna say that, but expenses go up. So, I don't know how you can really say that, to do the same amount of work. I mean, you can do $500,000, but are you gonna get the same amount for $500,000 next year, year after, five years from now? Are you gonna get the same $500,000 for the buck? The other problem that I have with it is, and to me, anyway, it's become a lot more evident, and I've never liked it, anyway, but is, I'm just here gonna use it for comparison. It's the logjam in Washington. Nothing getting done. And that's part of the reasoning, and why I mentioned last night, that I was not necessarily in favor of the two-thirds majority. Because if there is a need for, should it take, and I'm not saying it is, but if there is that need for, that's making, creating a supermajority that's needed to increase that, which, in what I'm relating to, you see what it's done to our United States Senate. So, I really think the two-thirds should just be a simple majority. And I think also with this, I think everybody, I think what's lost, been lost in the discussion at the end here is that, where this addresses the assessments and the mill overlay and that, we're still gonna have a big problem of addressing future street projects and the borrowing that's gonna go with it. We're somewhat in the earlier stages of this, to pick which route we wanted to go, Plan A, or B, or C, or however it was, 2.0, 3.0, or whatever they were called, that we've, we've come to the assessment part, but hopefully, but it seems like everybody has forgotten, until the next budget time, which is gonna be sneaking up on us, that these road projects, million dollars, multi-million dollar road projects are coming up, and what's going to be done. And that's part of where this came from, to get into this, was to somewhat, if not entirely alleviate that, was to, initially, was to maybe work towards that end. But this is not doing that at all. So, I'm just saying that in regards to that part of what the discussion was about before is still there. Road projects, sewer water, sidewalks, borrowing. That's all gonna be there. And I guess if it can be saved from other places or something, that's one thing. But until that is proven, or until that is there, but then, if the amount is saved, could be saved. Say you wouldn't have to borrow so much. By where you save the money one time, say you make a big savings, the next year, you're not gonna be able, probably, to make that bigger savings, because you made it. You found a place where to save from. So, eventually, it's gonna come back in that circle. So, I just raised that, because part of this discussion was about the road projects, the borrowing, and all of that, where we could get to, where did we wanna start at this and whatnot. And it ends up with the assessment and overlay, $500,000. But as I said earlier, the $500,000, to me, anyway, maybe I'm missing something, but to me, somewhere that amount goes up, because you're gonna be doing more work, I would think. Well, maybe not. But the other one, the other one, as I mentioned, the two-thirds majority, I think, I think the supermajority part, and I hear what the others have said, and where I, I hear where they're coming from. It's also that, I think, if there's the need, do we really need a supermajority to do that, make that take place? I wish we'd all give some thought to that, because I think it's, I think, hopefully, I would hope that we're all responsible enough that we go through the discussion process, anyway, and talk about why something should or shouldn't go up, and to make sense of it, and to, that we could have a simple majority on which way to go. But the two-thirds majority is almost guaranteeing, almost locking that in. And that's probably the intent for it. But I just, I think that's going a little too far for making it too restrictive this council, future councils, and years down the road councils may want to do. Granted, I guess they could change the two-thirds at that point in time if they wanted to. So, in some regards, it would be only relevant to the body that wanted to have the two-thirds. But by just a simple majority, that wouldn't matter. It'd just be a simple majority any time. And that's what I think our votes mostly, if not always, should be, that we shouldn't try to look at how we can stack the deck, keep something one way or the other. I haven't put that supermajority tag on it. I don't think that's how we should run. There may be certain instances, I don't think this is one. It's just, I guess, I'll, I'd let it go for that, because it's, just Sherri had some very good questions. Hope we all listened. And when and if this gets implemented, it's gonna take care of $350,000 of assessments each year. Hopefully, that would be enough, that's all what's gonna be there. But if more work than that is done, where are we? And that's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. Sue?
Did you have a question? I got a mental list, because I've got some on the board and some...
I guess I just, in looking at the whole thing with the CPI and so on, so since we, you should, each, each year you are going to approve the, the utility budget and you should by resolution set what that is. So I, I guess I'm thinking if the main concern is to, if it was, if, if the body was going to increase it above the CPI, that would require two-thirds vote, but do you still want it in there that it's, the budget for any succeeding year shall be increased by that amount? Because you're still, you're still going to have to vote on that. And I guess that could be anything. It could be a reduction. It could be that, but, but in any event, if you, if, if you wanted it to be above the CPI from the preceding year, then it would be two-thirds. So maybe this is kind of confusing as it's written because it's not specifically. So I guess that's my one comment of, of maybe getting rid of that, the first line and just leaving it as a resolution to increase the transportation utility budget above the CPIU, and then I can explain what that is, for the preceding year shall require two-thirds vote of all members voting. And then any other, whether you, anything else you want to do, whether it's lowering it or put it right at the CPI, that's going to have to be done each year anyways. And then take out that first line. I don't know if that's, makes any sense or or not, or if you're understanding what I'm saying.
I get it. I get it.
You do?
I get it.
Well, we don't care what you want.
I know, exactly.
These people. Well, the first line, it would just be a resolution. I mean, it, it basically says that you, you can change this from time to time by resolution. And then, so then it would say, a resolution to increase the transportation utility fund above, utility budget above the CPIU from the preceding year shall require two-thirds vote of all members voting. Otherwise, any other vote to reduce it, to put it at the same, to increase it to the CPI would just require a simple majority. But I think it was confusing when I put in there, the budget for any succeeding year shall be increased by, it was like it was automatic. But you're going to have to vote on that anyway, so. I mean, I, and I think you, it's, it's not saying that you could vote other than that unless you want to increase it, so. Am I making any sense?
That's where I was just kind of confused because I'm just like, I, I just didn't know. I mean, yes, prices are going to go up.
I think it's clear to just say you, by resolution can set it. But if you're going to set it more than what the CPI is from the previous year, above the previous year, then it requires a two-thirds vote. It was that, is that your intent? Or am I confusing you?
Yes, that was mine, though.
Okay. All right. So it's not going to automatically be that you're going to have to pass this resolution that puts it at the CPI each year, kind of as a default. You're going to, you're going to do whatever you want to do with, at a simple majority, but if you want to go above that, it will be two-thirds vote. Okay, so I'm going to, I would recommend to change that. My second thing is Table A, and I know Joe is talking about the numbers, and I'm wondering if the numbers as are in here, is that, might that change by the time of the utility being put in place so that, so that maybe Table A is actually something that we would do in a month or two once, you know, everything is set, or is this, are these the numbers that we're going to go with? Kind of no matter how the numbers fall?
Well, it could, it could go either way. I, I guess to the point on things changing yet, the number of accounts are still, still could be modified, as is the total number of trips that are being generated. And I will say even after implementation starts that as, you know, if there's questions and we find any things that need correcting, the number of trips will change within the next 30 days following any of those modifications. So it will, things will be fluctuating regardless, but it could certainly be revisited in the next month or two as we have, you know, advanced towards implementation.
Okay. So as, as part of this ordinance, so they would be basically adapting this or this right here, and then obviously if it changes, that's going to take another resolution to, or a resolution, whoops, to change. And that could very well happen in a month or two, or be requested to happen in a month or two. Right, okay. And then the third thing, we have the implementation on July 1, and I guess as that go, the, the ordinance would be effective July 1, is what it states. And I think that was something that, let's assume that we need two readings. That's a date that I think we figured could work is that, I think Tim, is that we think that's going to work with utility and so on and figuring out everything, July 1, or would it make sense to do it later or?
Well, I mean, I think we can make it effective July, July 1 as far as the ordinance, but whether we're, we're working with Water Light and getting all the billing set, if it, you know, occurs later than that, but at least if it's effective July 1 and then hopefully we'll shoot for that, but we'll, we'll have to, I know Joe is meeting with Water Light and he might have a little bit more insight on that, but you know, obviously for, for the utility to get the billing, if it occurs after that, you know, so be it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right, we've got Jake, Ryan, Dean, and Sherry. So Jake?
Big list. So first off, I wanted to commend staff in the Public Works Committee members for getting this right. This, a couple of years ago, started as really a bloated mess, in my opinion. We were presented with a lot of different options that were confusing. We had some consultants come in here once and, and go over it, and then they didn't come back. And so the time that was put in to actually get this right, I really appreciate. It does address the problem that it was meant to, that this whole idea originally came about, which was special assessments before it got turned into, well, let's add other road construction on top of it. And, and I think this is a safe bet in taking care of a problem that our residents have suffered from for a very, very long time. This protects our fixed income residents from taking a big hit when they are specially assessed, which has been an issue throughout the city. Every year we, we'd see them come in here and speak to that. So this will be an insurance on them that a small amount will be paid every year and they will not be suddenly billed for a large special assessment. And lastly, I, I think the two-thirds vote to protect the rest of the city from this tool being abused in the future is the right thing to do. It's been talked about many times how this is an additional tax. I think when it comes to something like an additional tax, there needs to be those rules in place. And going forward, if the streets start falling apart, all of a sudden we hit a flash flood or something, they are able to increase the transportation utility. It's not like this is, it, it's done. If they were to get six out of the eight members of council to approve it, that could be done. This just protects from it swaying one way or the other too much between election cycles. So overall, I think this is the, the right ordinance to go with. I'm, I'm glad that we got here, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Ryan?
Yeah, just wanted to comment. Obviously, this has been a long process with the transportation utility. Initially, you know, we, we looked at this as a way to potentially do our road construction without bonding and potentially generate some additional funds to try to get our street replacement program on a better line to, to be sustainable. So that's why we, initially we went after the two-plus scenario, which was generating about two and a half million dollars worth of utility fees, to see what those charges would be for businesses and residents. I think anything less than that would have been a disservice because we wouldn't have the information needed to know if we could do, you know, we could go bond-free and, and actually get some added road construction done. Once we found out what the fees were going to be for some of our businesses, it was apparent that there's just, there is no way in my mind that we could go through with, with a two-plus scenario. So I guess I, I just wanted to, you know, in my mind, it was never to go after the two and a half million. It was to find out to be completely sustainable and, and not go bond-free, what that number was going to be, and that was our starting point. And I think we made an educated decision to our financial threshold and a good one at that. And I'm, I'm pleased with the direction that this is headed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean?
Hi, yes, I, I agree with Mr. Austin and just said, and as well as with Mr. Katnau just said. Yes, is it, is it a new tax? Kind of. I mean, it's replacing the original intent, if you go back to way 2020. I believe we started this a couple of months after that election. And the original intent was to replace or look at an alternative to special assessments. And which, in my opinion, is an extremely unfair punishing tax to, punishing tax to a small majority, small portion of the residents on, on roads and streets, roads and sidewalks and curbs and gutters that the entire city utilizes. Yet the people and certain, a small percentage of those who happen to live where those construction projects are, are the ones paying for it. Are we, so in my effect, in my opinion, we are not adding a new tax, we're replacing it. Yes, it's a tax. Don't get me wrong. Fishing license is a tax. Fees are a tax. So yes, it's a tax, but I think we're replacing, if this moves forward, we're replacing an extremely punishing tax that was unfair to individuals. And, and I agree completely with Mr. Austin. Yes, a number of other options came available throughout this process. The consultants came in, they showed us all different kinds of opportunities to add to other construction, remove bonding. But the bottom line is that some of the, the more I look at it, the extreme burden that would have been placed, placed on residents, but particularly on businesses, because this is basically a swap in a way. A lot of, we've moved a lot of what residents were completely paying for before in the roads to, businesses are taking a bigger hit on it. So yes, if we'd have gone that two and a half million dollar, I just, it wouldn't have been fair to businesses or residents. So I'm fully in favor of taking care, removing the special assessment process, and if this is the best way to do it at this point. Yes, and regarding the two-thirds majority, I think that, that, yes, I understand what Mr. Raum is saying. It does handcuff potential councils and, and such, but yes, we still have to vote on the CPI. Each, we still have to vote on each year whether we're going to increase it by the CPI and whether we're going to do something drastic, change it, throw borrowing in. If a new council or a new group has a two-thirds majority that wants to change this to a completely different level, that's but I think protecting the residents and the businesses with that caveat of the two-thirds is probably a wise thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Evans?
Thank you. I agree with everyone that spoke just recently. I think it's a good starting point at least, you know, to get our foot wet, get it kinks worked out, and we can always expand it. I agree with Mr. Austin as well and Mr. Raum. With the roads, the way that they are, it would be nice to have a little bit more, but let's just start with this. Thank you for all your work. One question. The resolution hearings, Tim, that were supposed to happen in April, so do we have to make a resolution that to? I had thought at one time that they always happen in April, and if it wasn't going to happen, I thought we had to have a resolution not doing those, or is it, if this just automatically wipes that out?
That'd probably be worse.
I think we're probably going to clean that all up next month with specific language, assuming, you know, if this would pass. I guess even if it passes tonight, we can clean that up next month in terms of the existing resolutions. And then there's some of the other language in Chapters 5 and 6 that Joe and I have been working on to make sure we catch, you know, all of the things that now aren't going to be assessed versus the things that are continuing to be assessed in terms of new development and so on, whether it be sidewalk or sewer laterals. And we anticipate having that for next month, so that would be part of that to make sure that that's all wrapped up.
Okay, so next month, we could expect the changes to the ordinance that you and Joe are kind of working on?
Hopefully, yeah.
In that hopefully we're all in agreement? So if it comes next month and it has to be a majority to begin the public hearings? Is that true?
I'm not sure what you mean.
Does it have to be unanimous? To begin the public hearings?
It would be unanimous to, to change any ordinances, if you were changing ordinances.
So if it doesn't?
Right, so then that would be April and May, then?
So if it's not unanimous in April, then it would have to modify and come back in May?
Right.
And then kind of keep going from there? And then we still need two public hearings? Is that correct?
We don't need any public hearings.
Okay, for some reason I was thinking that we did. Okay.
Nope. And, and the changes are, are just consistent with what we've, you've kind of confirmed each, each meeting in terms of what is assessable, what's not. But we're, we spent, I don't know how much time this afternoon, kind of going through, and it's, the, the present ordinances are really kind of difficult to just make the changes to, and I think it's probably something that to just kind of, not necessarily start over, but just clean, clean it up as long as we're, we're addressing all these things, and it's to cover all those loopholes and what are the situations when this happens and it, when it doesn't happen, and if it, if there is some discretion, what is that discretion? So that's what we kind of started working on and we're, and realized that to have something by this meeting tonight, it would have just, it'd been a not, it wouldn't have been a good use of our time to go to that extent, but not to really clean up other parts of it too that are affected. So I guess that's, we're going to attempt to clean up Chapters 5 and 6 and 2 to the extent that this, this transportation, utility ordinance affects those things.
Okay, and then just one other question. So in, in Table A, like you were saying before, so let's say it comes back next month, everything is perfectly fine, but the accounts maybe aren't established or anything like that. And then the next month they are, we would have to do a new resolution for the whole utility because of Table A? Is that correct? Or I, I don't?
I think that's kind of what we're saying, that we might, you know, I, I don't think the, the budget amount is not going to change, but the actual
The base fee and the trip fee would
Trip rate would change.
Would change, yep.
And that's just based upon the number of accounts and the number of trips. Although I guess if, once the budget is set, then that's just, you know, nothing that the council really, I mean, that's just then the formula applying once we determine the trip rates and the accounts, I'm sorry, the number of trips in the accounts, that's just going to, you know, those numbers might change, which are, are going to affect the actual base fee and the trip rate. But I think it probably would be best to have another resolution at that point. Even though, I mean, what we have stated here is that you're, you're setting the budget, but by setting the budget, then you're also setting the base fees and the trip rates. So but the base fee and the trip rate really are within your control because it's based on the number of accounts. it's based on the number of accounts and the number of trips, so, after you set the budget. So, yeah, I think we'll have to have another resolution if this is going to change, just, I guess, for the first time to get it down on paper exactly what it is, and then maybe going forward, you're just a, well, yeah, you, you're going to set it all each time, I was going to say the budget, just the budget, and then the rest of it works out itself, but...
Because the, in like, last night, Joey, you were saying like there was a question, and I, I missed the first part, but something someone was asking about, I don't know if it was an apartment building, or, no, I think it was a strip mall, something about four, four businesses in there, if you were going to do the one building, and then he divvies it up, or if each business is going to get it, and you had kind of said that things are going to be changing, and I know, you know, the 30 days or whatever. So, these accounts could completely change, the number of accounts could change even within the 30 days or 60 days, and it's not like we have to bring a resolution every time that that changes, because it's going to be a change, it's just, that would be added, changed, and then next year's resolution, say, oh, hey, you know, we're, this is what we have. Is that right? Thank you.
That is, that is correct.
Mr. Zecher?
Thank you. I might be asking the same question again, so I apologize, but like, what we're voting on tonight? What, what are, what are we voting on tonight, then? Or aren't we yet, because we have to make more vocabulary changes?
You are voting on the ordinance.
Right, you're voting on the ordinance.
Before you.
Right, and I, and you're voting on basically setting the budget at 500,000, and the numbers that are available to us in terms of the number of trips and the number of accounts, then sets up a tentative base fee and trip rate fee.
Sorry, go ahead.
But it appears that, since not everything is totally set yet, that there might be, the number of accounts might change, and the number of trips might change, which then are going to change the base fee and the trip rate.
Okay. I get that. So you don't have to go through that again?
Right, okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay, I just, you did a good job the first time. But...
And even better the third and fourth time.
Practice. But again, if, if we vote, and we're, you, all of us vote the same, we're passing this as an ordinance tonight? Okay. Uh, and outside of that, Tom, I just want to let you know that I have not forgotten, I, I lose way too much sleep over this probably, between, between the, the utility itself and creating a new system of taxation with just us as the gatekeepers and the future councils. It's, to me, it's a little intimidating and scary. You know, it's important. And I have not forgotten that we, in my opinion, we have a street problem, we don't really have a street problem, we have a, a budget problem, we have a debt problem. We, we don't, our government doesn't fit within the amount of money that we bring in, so we have to resort to taking out debt every year in order to do the roads, and yes, we could have built this utility very quickly into the behemoth to take on that 2 million or 2.5 million, or, you know, like, and, and I think that, I think that we've done right to avoid that at this point, and I think to grow into that, and to, then to protect it from, I, I don't, I don't look at future council people and fear them like they're, you know, bad people, but I think it certainly can't hurt to make it harder for them to make sure they do their due diligence and work together like we're doing, to be able to pass this, for them to be able to say, you know, let's work together to make sure we got our ducks in a row before we increase this at a rate that is not fair to the residents that are flipping the bill. So, I do look forward to picking up the budget. I, I still talk about it, I still think about it. It is hugely important, but that's where our street money is, and that's what we got to figure out, we got to re, but that's a whole nother conversation. So, at that point, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Delaney?
I just have a question on, it seems to me like this table A is a fluid, and it could be changing daily, basically. It would make sense to me if the council would approve the budget, and as far as the per-trip fees and the number of accounts and stuff like that, that would be handled by engineering. So, we would set $500,000, and then the rest of it is pretty fluid. How they get to that $500,000 is up to engineering. Because businesses close, they open, you got people...
Right, but we're not going to, there, we're not going to be changing, I mean, I think, it seems like once it's set, once, the first time, right? And then, I think, I didn't think that the idea was to every month or every time a trip cha, you know, the trip number changed, or the accounts changed, that then we would change, go in and change the fees, right? That would only happen...
That's, that's right. So, on an annual basis, it, it could, you know, it would make sense to update the number of accounts and the total number of trips, so that, you know, that we're sticking close to the, the target revenue standpoint, because there, there will be some slight adjustments, I don't expect anything major to change, and, and it could be fully approved tonight, and, and we don't have to bring it back necessarily if there's, if there isn't any material changes to it. I think it's just a matter of making sure that if there are any changes, that the, the cost per trip and the base fee at the onset here are going to produce on a monthly basis what we're anticipating.
Yeah, I'm fine with approving it like it is, and if there's little changes, that wouldn't make any difference. So, I'm, I'm good with approving it just as is.
Jerry then, Jake.
So, Sue, when you, I'm sorry, so, your adjustment to number two, when you were suggesting that taking out that first line, the budget front proceeding, so are we gonna, if we wanted to, if we're going to vote on this tonight, would we vote on that as ta, I mean, we could say we agree to this, but take that line out? How, how you worded it?
Yeah, I just sent it to all of you how I would change it, but I just, I sent you each an email just with that new paragraph, which is basically taking out the one sentence. But that, that's, I thought it would make it clear and maybe more with, with your intent. If you, you know, if you're okay with the newer language, then I think you should address that with the new language. If, if you'd rather keep the old language, then we can keep the old language, but, yeah, I, like I said, I basically just took the, the sentence out saying that the succeeding year budget would be increased, and then just left it at the two-thirds majority, and then I defined what the CPI U was from the first sentence, so...
Um, I'll let you talk. I was just going to make a motion to approve it as is, but we'll let Jake.
All right, go ahead, Jake.
I, I was just going to speak to, regarding the change in the language for increasing by the Consumer Price Index every year, and I would think that would be necessary to, as what Tom was speaking about earlier, do a similar amount of work. So, I didn't, I didn't see a problem with that language. And then, to me, voting to approve this tonight, which is what I plan to do, is voting to approve the current number of trips that have been assigned to each type parcel by engineering currently. I don't know if we want to get in the business of changing that, as it was discussed on a monthly, or even every six months. I think what we go forward with tonight should be what's in place, and then there's an appeal process for if anyone wants to change that. It just seemed to get more confusing to me the, the further things were read out, I had a clear understanding at the beginning, and I, I feel like we should just vote on what we have.
Um, I guess maybe for Sue, Dean brought it up, and I heard it last night, regarding interest, would that, could that potentially be taken up in the next month in the chapters five and six that are going to be looked at?
Um, I guess it depends.
On not charging interest on balances going forward, eliminating that part.
For who? Yeah, I guess it would, it would be...
For the outstanding balances.
Uh, yeah, that might be, that would be a totally different, I mean, would it be for the people that are getting the credit? Would it be for anybody that's in pay status?
I think that was anybody...
I guess it would be for anybody that's in pay status, are the ones getting the credit, so, um...
Because the dollar, it's really not dollar for dollar, you know, the credit does not equal coming close to what they're paying.
Right, so then we're refunding, or we're canceling interest, so then we're kind of getting back to the other option of, of refunding, I mean, we're refunding assessments that have legally been levied or given to the property owners.
Also, I, I guess it's just food for thought.
I guess it could be a separate...
Should the council feel like?
Right.
I didn't know if it's considered refund, or, because I think that interest is, Tim doesn't think it's considered a refund, it's, it's just something we charge...
Well, but you're, but it, you were told you are legally going to pay this, and you're going to pay this at this interest rate, and now we say, well, now, you're, you're, you know, I mean, I, yeah, I guess I'm, I'm not sure, but I'm sure it could possibly be done.
Yeah, I didn't, I figured that's probably in that chapter five and six, versus anything further tonight.
Okay.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance with...
With the, with the change.
That Sue emailed.
Right.
Okay.
Do we need to read that, or is it for the public, or is it good? Okay.
All right. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, please cast your ballots. So, a motion carried seven As, one Nay. So, we'll be on council next month. And we are on to human resources yet for March 10th. Mr. Bemke?
Thank you, Mayor. Human Resource Committee met March 10th, and all committee members were present, there's a list in the clerk's office of those in attendance. The meeting was called at order at 4:50. Item number two was discuss and consider for approval for the proposed rate for seasonal labors for DPW in parks and rec. And there's an attachment, there was a motion by Evanson, second by Veneman, to approve the proposed rates for seasonal labors for DPW in parks and recreation, motion carried three to zero. Item number three, discuss and consider for approval the appointment of a relief supervisor within the Parks and Rec Department as needed and determined by the Parks and Building Superintendent. Motion by Ben, Veneman, second by Bemke, to approve the appointment to, of a relief supervisor within the Parks and Recreation Department as needed, determined by the Park and Building Superintendent. Motion carried three to zero. Item number four, discuss and consider for approval modifying the chief operator position to the Assistant Wastewater Superintendent position within the Department of Public Works. Again, there's an attachment, there was a motion by Bemke, second by Evanson, to approve the modifications of the chief operator position to Assistant Wastewater Superintendent position within the Department of Public Works. Motion carried three to zero. Item number five, discuss and consider for approval modifying the Design Engineer II position to City Assistant City Engineer within the Department of Public Works. See attached job description, motion by Bemke, second by Evanson, to approve the modifications of the Design Engineer II position to Assistant City Engineer within the Department of Public Works. Motion carried three to zero. Number six, there was an update on combining of hiring policies, there was a discussion, no action taken. Number seven, update regarding the wage study, discussion, and again, no action taken. Item eight was for adjournment, motion by Veneman, second by Bemke, to adjourn, motion carried three to zero. Meeting adjourned at 5:21 PM. With that, I'll submit for your approval.
We have a motion and a second, or a motion by Bemke, second by Austin, to approve the report as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Mr. Raoul?
That motion carried eight As, zero Nays. We are on to item 11, reports of other committees, commission boards, or department reports. What are your wishes? Yep, we have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Veneman. Any questions on those reports? Seeing none, please, please cast your ballots. That motion carried six As, one Nay, one abstention. Any referrals presented to you, Clark? Okay, I think it, oh, Mr. Delaney?
A few months ago, I had made a referral about check-ins on the elderly after storms or power outages, and you said it didn't have to be a referral, I just wanted an update. We have storm season, tornado month is coming up here pretty quick, just wondering if we made any headway on that at all.
Yeah, I'll circle around back with the police department on that. I don't have any direct information, but I, we did talk, so...
Okay. The other thing, are you going to talk, this is Jake's last meeting, right?
Well, and that's my next question for the council, is, as we talk every year, do we have a second council at the beginning of the, another council meeting at the beginning of the month to dispense with any business from, the committee meetings from the beginning of the month, and then have our reorg? Or do you have the new council, which is just about everybody, take up the committee meetings from, at that reorganization meeting? What, what happened? We were talking to, what happened last year?
I think last year, there was not a meeting. We, we had talked about it, and, and it was voted not to, to have a last meeting of the old council. So, the new council just met on the third, third Tuesday of April, and took up the business from the committees from the old council.
I was just thinking, there wasn't anything as, and I don't want to say not important, I don't mean that, but with the utility, you know, this, I, I would be in favor of meeting to hear it again with, with this council as it sits now.
So, let's look at our calendars. So, let's see. So, our regular council meeting is on April 19th, the reorganization one. I'm also looking at the council chamber calendar too, to make sure we don't double book.
Hopefully, it's not on election night either.
No, definitely not. So, I think in the past, we've done it the Thursday before, if we did it before, if I recall right. So, that's the 14th, but is HR meeting on the 14th? Or we can, since the Aprils meetings on, or reg, next, the reorganization meeting's on the 19th, on Monday, the 18th, we have the closeout meeting for this, so we'd have two council meetings in a row, and then you can get your HR in on the 14th.
Like I said, it's up to, I didn't hear anybody else talk... Like I said, it's up to, I don't hear anybody else talk if they, if they want another meeting or not, I don't...
I don't think we can legally do one on the back-to-back. Yeah, yeah. Go ahead Jake. Oh, I'm sorry, Matt was first, Jake.
I think what, Sherry, what you're saying is we have like an important issue on the table that we'd want to hear together again, so I'm all for it, if we can make it work.
So what would you think about having it on the 18th, the day before?
Well, I, that Thursday, Jake, that Thursday, I mean, if we start at six, I mean, we should be done in an hour.
Is there a lot pressing on that agenda? Do you know so far?
It's Brewer's opening day, the 14th.
Oh, I've, they play in the day or they play in? It's four, oh. Can you put it on TV? Oh, I got a problem, I, I didn't, I, I'm glad I haven't accepted my invitation to the HR meeting yet.
So, what, what works, Shane, you're looking at the calendar, Sue, you're saying that the only other time really available would be the, the day before?
So the day before, I see nobody's, currently has the council chamber reserved on the 18th.
Or we could do the 14th at six?
The 14th is open, yep.
Does that work for everybody?
14th is open. All in favor of 14th, good.
And the only thing that's really gonna be on there that we're gonna talk about is the transportation utility, I would hope.
Well, there'd probably be a finance meeting, any other committee meetings that night, or from the, eh, beginning of the month. Cause finance...
Or could we hold those out for the, for the regular meeting? The organizational meeting? So it, one's not too longer than the other, you know what I mean?
Cause you have the finance meeting on the 5th. Public Works, when are you meeting? Seventh on Thursday.
But could we just hold those out to the regular meeting, so that way, that meeting's not so short that we could basically just talk about the transportation utility on the 14th?
Yeah, if that's what your guys' wishes are.
You know, more focused towards just that?
Right, I mean, I think the, the idea of, is for, that you, it would take up all of the committee's work so that the new council wasn't doing, you know, think, passing or deciding things from the old, from the old committees, 'cause it, you would have probably different committees, but it, and the reorg generally is just an organizational and, and then wouldn't really take up any business, and it's kind of meant to be that way. But, uh, so, but you, yeah, but you can do it how, however. But as I said, I think if you're gonna hear one committee, you probably should, or, you know, that the idea of having the first meeting is to, to pass on what the committees had done at their meetings, um, not necessarily to hear an, an issue from the council or the, you know, a second reading, but you could limit it to that, I guess, and then all of the committee reports are gonna go to the new council.
Let's get it done.
Right.
The 14th?
I thought you said Monday, the 18th.
Well, you can do 14th, cause it's Thursday after HR. Monday, the 18th, is an option.
Day after Easter.
But not Tuesday, is that, Tuesday, the 12th, not an option, or no?
Tuesday, the 12th, well, 'cause then you wouldn't have HR met, then.
Oh, gotcha.
And Tuesday, 12th, there's court.
Yep.
Tuesday and Wednesday, there's court.
Let's just take a vote on Monday, the, or Monday or the two, Thursday.
Uh, the 14th or the 18th? Okay, who wants the 14th, raise your hand. Five.
I'm with Sue.
Tom wants both, nine.
I have a question, Shane.
Go ahead.
Would this count as a second reading, the, the next council meeting, if we have a special council meeting? And then after that, then it's passed, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
We decided on Thursday, the 14th. 6:00 PM after following HR. Okay, thank you very much. We're on to item 13, adjournment.
Still moved.
We have a motion by Veneman, second by Zachary. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And anybody oppose? That motion carried.